Okay. So, for the planning of building tour and now the move. First over business tonight is a public hearing from Optimus Construction Management. We come up and get aside, say your name please. If you were also close to us so we can see the presentation. Thank you. Is that a detachable microphone? That work okay or?
I'm ready to think that's connected.
Talk louder. Thank you. My name is Eric Dubin. I'm with Troyian Engineering and basically the, uh, this asset, the senior housing project that we're looking at is at the old primary school, which is right here on Route 27. And, um, basically, I think we, we have a pretty good understanding of what existing school is. It has had one addition and, uh, it's got the wings of the school, um, both east and west, and then we have the existing gymnasium at the rear with the mechanical space. There is an balcony area out front. We have the two entrances that are off of Route 27. We have the old overflow and plenty of parking that's located, um, essentially on that west side. And then we have, um, a couple of drainage pipes that intersect the site. Your playground that's at the rear going north, and then we have the hillside. That, um, that exists. This is our demo plan where we're removing, uh, removing all the pavement. We're going to be, uh, recreating on better base for a lot of the pavement. We've got hot holes, other things, issues with curbing, things like that. And we are removing this front drive and this, um, front part, which is the base into our Route 27. And then turning that back into essentially, um, into vegetation and more. And then our plan, as we see with the new table, is to essentially do some minimal grading here on, um, on at least, uh, the west entrance. We're going to create a loop road that goes all around the entire site. And we're going to keep the overflow parking. We're going to do some infill for the building, which will be cave areas to connect these two wings, at least on the front, keep the interior courtyard. Keep a couple of these in build where the existing glass are essentially, um, they were small courtyard planting areas. Uh, doing infill on this east side of the building, um, just a small expansion, basically is an inside corner and just filling that in. We are, where the, uh, back of the existing gymnasium, which was the loading area for the old kitchen, we are going to be retaining that and are utilizing that. And then we're going to do a three-story addition that's at the rear of the property. Then we have a little bit of parking for, um, uh, to access that space and then we're doing a couple of tension ponds that kind of helps storm water slow down, cleaning up the whole. We have a lot of, um, building mounted lights for the most part, uh, to the buildings and lighting sidewalks. And then we are adding some parking area lights just on this overflow parking. And then you have a creative walkway that comes across onto our sidewalk. And then, of course, we have this drop-off area, which is on the west side with, uh, basically a porch chair so people could pull up, you have to drop people off. Um, so for instance, visitors, if they want to come and pick up, um, their elderly parents or relatives or whatever else. And then we'll, uh, go out and get the contact. So. We have a small one-story connector and, uh, basically access way into the rear of the mechanical space for the existing, um, gymnasium. And, um, again, turning this back into even a natural grading, long seating, keeping existing vegetation that's out here. Utilities, uh, we have existing sewer pump station where keeping that, we've got a generator, backup generator on that. And existing water line that's in place, we're keeping existing water line. Um, our usage is going to be, um, less than the existing school use was for those utilities. And then the existing electrical line is also, um, slated to stay. Uh, and that's on the east side of the the project. So. The I think that's about it. We're keeping the existing, um, stormwater, uh, management system and doing some updates to some of the curbing and some other areas or a little bit tighter to, uh, to the hillside. We're, we're creating a swale on the back, although there's a wet area that comes down the hill and we have a few water in in both directions to, um, the existing, um, drainage inlet and outlets. And then we're keeping the hillside essentially the way it is, um, at this point. So. So I think, in a nutshell, we've got planned breakdown sheets, but in a nutshell, I think, um, I mean, the use, as we can see here, for it's for senior early housing, and you know, we have Fred, um, expand on that. If you have a question about that. He's, uh, he's a little more diverse than I am on, on exactly how they do it across as far as what they do with that. So. In a nutshell, that's it. That's our point.
Question from board members? On that building, you're gonna have drain pipes all the way around the building, then shoot that water in.
Are you talking about the proposed three-story building? Um, yes. Yeah, we'll have, we'll have existing, um, foundation buildings around this. I'm not sure if they have, have an existing building. I don't think so. We're gonna have it known until we dig it out for Jason to verify it. And then we have ample, uh, room to just be able to go out and, and get it, plenty of, plenty of, um, elevation for that. Cause, uh, you know, at the end of this existing turnaround, which is out here, I mean, it drops off pretty good before we get our property.
They hit pretty well.
It does. Yes. We're trying to raise this, keep this up, like I said, creating swale areas, which we know are wet. And then be able to get them going both ways. Cause we know all the water that comes off the hillside. You know, normal rain events, as we know, a lot of that stuff will infiltrate, especially right now. But, um, when you have back-to-back storms and you have water that's, or ground is saturated, you get more runoff. So you just gotta wait till it's bottom of the hill and hopefully you can divert it and get the runoff going each direction on that. So.
Any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Uh, what is the height of that three-story building?
It's around thirty-five feet, under thirty-five feet. I have, I do have the, uh, one of those four.
Sprint it to the level to save more of this?
Absolutely. So there's the existing built, uh, both building three stories with cable roof and three doors. The good thing about this particular building in the site, you know, if we look back a little bit. We are at elevation seventy at the back, but up at the road, you know, we're, we're up at, you know, essentially elevation eighty-three, somewhere in there. So you're already, you know, we're already thirteen feet down in the back, but how put the scale of the building is from, from Route 27.
Oh, we've been turned with the ordinance, so we're thirty-five feet.
Yeah, we're not asking for a bar. It's not a question.
Yeah. Other questions from the public? Questions from the board? Seven more things before the public here, and thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Martin, calling the board. They're including all the minutes of the 21st meeting. We have the elected chairman for the next meeting. And nominations from anybody?
Powell.
Yeah. I'll, I'll use nominated Paul Olson to have a second. Less than second, there's any discussion? Although if anybody voted Paul Olson for chairman of the unanimous. Take a motion for a few minutes of the 21st second meeting, please. You don't wanna make a motion to the separate minutes? Let's see, maybe Mark, it's been starting to do. Any discussion? Paul is in favor? So sanctions? Mr. Dubin, step to the table. We have the site plan reviewed, distributed to everybody. Everybody have any questions on individual lines? I will set the motion to set the site plan review of the sessions. That's complete. Have a motion from audience, second. Questions? For a whole second. Yeah. Discussion?
Everything I'm writing is qualified. Motion to set David Paul out of the in connection with the town.
We'll have to get a letter from the town if they're willing to accept.
Yeah, so we've been working with, uh, Mr. Lowly for a few months here, um, about specifically capacity. There's a couple of things that went on. For one, um, we may or may not do that upgrade. We need to upgrade our pumping system on that end. We understand that. The bigger question for Mr. Lowly is, um, we've already given the anticipated flows. So not an issue on that. We submitted that information. We're still trying to figure out essentially what we're going to, um, you know, what that pump can handle because it's concerned about the pumping station on Route 27, the town side, and, um, can handle on that. And we're using with former associates, which is essentially, you know, the town's consultant engineer wise. Um, to be able to, we've lived up to them too. We're still, um, we're working on that specific issue, and we understand that essentially what we're proposing, um, is that existing commission that's been there and we're just trying to work out all the details, um, moving forward. So I would say any, um, obviously if you haven't worked through that, I'm gonna, for Mr. Lowly to get that down. I would say, you know, if we had any approvals, we were happy to make that a conclusion. On who would make the work with this.
Do you guys be willing to pay up? I'm just asking, if you guys be willing to pay up for the town's pump station, you want to be able to gain a good capacity?
The, uh, conversation I've had with my next friend, Elke, uh, conversation I've had, uh, Dennis and the sewer commissions at this point is that, uh, we don't know what the structure would be for contributing to the replacement. There's eighteen pumps in town. Sewer commission feels all of them have to be updated. Uh, there's one that impacts us, and I've talked with Dennis about how we would handle it either in this. Usually when we've got an existing building or an existing sewer line, we don't pay a sewer connection fee. But if the town wants to call it that, to have some money to towards that replacement, uh, there, we're not gonna need to use of it until probably the spring of, uh, twenty-four. And what we would be willing to pay a connection fee, uh, you know, usually it's something like one or two hundred thousand that we would, and that's what I mentioned to Dennis already. Uh, I know that, or don't have any idea where it's gonna come to and what they decide. What the question is, is that they're saying now they feel the capacity of that pump station that the town has because of the age of the pump, I guess it's about eighteen years old. They said it's ninety percent. And what we're trying to do is get some indication of how short a timeframe the pumps that are on site that get up the street level are, uh, able to pump. So if we're using thirteen thousand gallons a day, but it's only pumping a thousand gallons an hour, then there may be no problem at all with where they're at. So that's what we're working through. We're trying to get, uh, we're dealing with, uh, the generator company that that generator's on. We've ordered parts for it to them already. To, uh, a company called PowerPoint. And temporarily, we're talking about them bringing a temporary generator to get those pumps working so Eric can get the, uh, an indication as to how quickly they discharge that tank. So we're trying to come with that. We know it's gonna be ongoing. Uh, it's something that we were, if it's a contingency you want to place on that, we'd like to have to approve the project contingent on getting you approved. Cause we feel that we're gonna come to some conclusion on that end.
From my perspective, you say normally you don't pay a connection, but we're building a new building that wasn't there. So that somehow has to be connected into the system.
Yeah, but it's through the same pipe that an existing one has, where it's sustained with the water. The water line is sufficient for the by both the existing building and the new one.
But with the new building, it may not be enough to supply the pump that exists. So, uh, I would say I was asking whether you're reimbursing town in the course of the project, which you don't know.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Yes, we're willing to do it to an point, we're not going to, you know, if it's a, it's a billion-dollar fee to do it on the street. We're not offering to pay the million dollars, but, you know, it's something that's going to benefit the town over the long run and everybody else. Maybe it affects, I, I know what they're talking about now. It was just ready to see everybody's surfed it. You know, and, uh, this would be something that we would be participating in from that point of view as well. Is it answered the question?
Yeah, I thought they had a lot of figures.
You know, yeah, that includes not just our pump station. No, that's, that's that. Oh, ninety-seven, but you both, well, I was about to broaden it. So it's all that wasn't the town. So.
And the system manager's slightly past you on twenty-seven, so it's not over twenty-seven.
Yeah.
But it ends at the high school, which has a system manager. You're, you're only at one end of the system, one, close to one end of the system already.
I didn't know where I'm at. That's why I asked. I didn't know. Yeah, it's, it's, it's nothing that any official's been able to tell me, well, this is what we've gotta do. This is what we want from. So what we did is stepped up to the plate, said, okay, if you wanna call it a connection fee, and it's a couple hundred thousand and we're using it to contribute towards replacing that pump, we're willing to do that. We're willing to pay it early on. The town can, you know, decide when they're gonna put that in, but we won't need it until the spring of twenty-four. So you'd have all of next year to replace the pump if that's the way you're going to go, or if you've got costs related to, uh, the having the engineering done for the sewer commission on part of the town. You know, it could be used for that. It's up to you guys depending how you wanna spend it.
Not a question from this.
Well, not this committee, but the town in general.
Any questions from the board? Or the questions from the public? Questions from the public? I want to entertain a motion to accept, accept the subject to having a resolution to the sewer connection problem and force. And, uh, I can't see going forward with the project before that's resolved, if you're honest with the person. It's just it could be a huge, huge economic impact on the town. Although there's still a fight, there, there was also a brand new building that's we started, that's gonna do that, but not a lot of commercial picture.
I want them to approve subject to a resolution, um, of the sewer project. Are you making?
I'll take that motion.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Woman's favor. Man is.
I don't know what the, I don't have a schedule for this. So.
Two cents, I heard, or swear foot?
It may be, I figured it's, but I, I don't have a schedule.
So we got caught, unfortunately. I think the first week that, um, Mrs. Ravi was on vacation. I'm, I'm sorry, maternity. I'll be on that. So, um, on maternity leave. So, um, I think Carl was having, he didn't quite understand what he was struck for. Yeah, we're certainly, we can pay that. We're happy. You guys just wanted to do that.
Be paid, so when they're in the town office, consider how important you can be paid in the town office.
Absolutely. Happy to do that.
Motion made, approved, will the project go forward once the sewer issue is resolved?
So we have to fully resolve the sewer issue? Is that?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's the only issue that we brought up. So that's the only problem that we could say in the end of the talk. We've approved conditional upon a sewer issue being resolved.
Okay.
Throw up my air and it'll go away.
Yes. I, okay.
Very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Rob, and step up to the floor.
Hello, everybody. How are you? Let's hear everybody. So I don't have a, uh, thing like this I show as mine's pretty simple. My name is Charles Gurr. We are, my name is Charles Gurr. I'm the natural right here in town, the Sasa. A resident of my hometown, life of students in Dino Guaya. Um, we are proposing to build a forty by ninety addition of that that was passed in Napa, that we built around eight years ago. Uh, if you go behind the story at this point, you'll see, um, some of you have. We have added a bunch of conex boxes that we don't think that appeal to the Sasa, the way we want things to look. So we spent a bunch of money on those with no return. So I wanted to take five pauses, get rid of those, put a forty by ninety addition back in the store. Uh, basically, it's just gonna be a, um, a warehouse, a warehouse, uh, capitals of all the parts. It's pretty simple. Uh, no, no sewer, no water, just lights, sheds. The show will not extend into the warehouse. Everything else probably stay the way that it is. No customers will be back there. Um, I have papers if you wanna see it, if anybody has not. Once again, it's pretty simple, forty by ninety up the back side. Uh, the roof line living will stay exactly the same. When you pull into the main drive and you come around the backside of McDonald's, unfortunately, now you see the mess back there and it's sitting up there, very, very ill. Um, difficult, what we had to work with. Uh, when you, uh, actually pull behind there after the addition is done, all roof lines are gonna stay the same. It's gonna be what I would expect. It's gonna be very, it's a colorful batch. It'll be perfect. Questions?
Questions from anybody? Report on the site plan visit. There was the area. And other gentleman was Steve Wallace was there, he might be familiar. My point did, it all looked like it's gonna fit. I was a little concerned about the drainage, but almost the entire position is gonna be all what we asked for. It's not so. There's not any big change for the inverters start. This is what my concern was. So I, I don't see an issue with this. The, the existing drainage dish, they've actually pushed the building from behind, put back to ninety points of it. The drainage stayed the way it is. We've done, we've done, and that is to work on it. So I there's that issue with property line, anything else. And it will look a lot better than it does now with the collection. My point of view from the site, thank you. Other questions? Okay. So what we'd like to do is settle a public hearing for the next meeting. Which we'll get it in the paper. We'll have to prepare the course of the end of the paper. And at the next meeting, we'll have a public hearing in the middle of the floor, you know, saying we can help make it better.
Fantastic. Thank you very much.
Any other questions from anybody in the audience?
Actually, I do. No, 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 sorry. I'm off over in this general. Can I ask a general question?
Throw over and stop editing.
I might want to break it. I'm throwing it at the bus again. Sorry.
Very well.
I said we're, but we have to, like, down on the
real quick, I'll follow up with that. Please, sorry, second role with gas paint. I just wanna follow up real quick clarification. Ed's question about thirty-five foot height limit in the Dallas asset. Um, gentleman was speaking about, because it's so low from the road, is the, is the height requirement from the place, the point of the ground foundation from that building doesn't take into consideration the height of the land draw?
That's thirty-five. The mountain behind it could be taller than it. Now, if you build it on top of the mountain, it's still a lot thirty-five feet.
Right, exactly. So it's thirty-five feet from where the building projects from, blah, blah, blah. Okay. He confused me because he said it was, it was drawing down fifteen feet.
Behind, behind it is rough, and because there is a waterfall, and if you brought up a site, it's, the school had a waterfall. And they're aware of it. They have to deal with it.
So thirty-five feet.
Ground.
They have, they have They have, they have approval for that project to go forward. But if that building is thirty-five feet or more, it doesn't meet the code of the last year in town.
And they would have to come for, they have to come into bearings.
That's.
Not at thirty-five, but at thirty-six, you know, to put it both. Then they have to modify for bearings, and that has to be done in private.
Very good, thank you.
Other business, anybody on the board have? Other business from the general public?
Yeah, absolutely. A question on last thing now.
I believe so. They have to come back and get put on the agenda, wouldn't you? Just as we said, they're getting put on the agenda, you're going to have to come and put yourself on the next agenda, she'll schedule a public hearing. But you're going to have to come in by Friday and get yourself put on the agenda for, I think it's the twenty-third, twenty-sixth of March. But then it has to come back to us, so. And let me get towards what they wanted to. I want to make a motion to adjourn. I'm making a safer motion. I got a subject. One in favor? unanimous? Thank you for.